Feel free to hit the board. And I'll pass it over to Jenny to share the first question.
Great, thanks Vatsidi. First question is, how would you describe an effective school committee member? If elected at the end of your two-year term, how would you know you were successful? And the first person that are speaking out is Alborz.
Right, um, thank you so much. First of all, hi. And you know, I just really want to express my appreciation for CFAD, for hosting this forum and for everybody for being here. Um, you know, I think it's, um, we all have the same goals and uh, you know, for what's best for Cambridge Public Education. Um, I think in my view, the, the two main traits of sort of being an effective school committee member, um, you know, are, first of all, I think it's, you know, you would want, um, somebody who brings a unique expertise to the table. Everybody's going to have, I think, overlapping, um, you know, abilities and everybody obviously has an overlapping set of interests. Um, but I think it's good to have sort of a, uh, for, for an effective committee that it was sort of consists of a diverse group of parents, educators, and then people with sort of domain-specific knowledge and the individual aspects. I think the sort of second aspect that I would, I would highlight for being an effective committee member is somebody who has, um, the real, I think, ability to listen, you know, with, with any sort of, um, multi-person committee. You know, there's always going to be differing viewpoints. I think there's not going to be any, you know, on some issues, you know, everybody will be aligned and some I think it'll be different and sort of, um, having the sort of humility to accept that. Um, you know, um, some things you have to compromise and on some things you might be wrong, I think is a very sort of important trait in order to have a cohesive group. I think so for, for myself, um, in terms of what, what I would see bringing to a committee is, um, that I have perhaps, uh, slightly more recent experience, I think, being sort of like, um, you know, a student and being involved, I think, on the, the, you know, pedagogical side, um, and, um, you know, uh, a lot of experience with designing and teaching introductory courses across, um, a number of scientific disciples. Um, I'll consider my term successful if, uh, in addition to the immediate reintroduction of algebra in middle schools. Um, if by two years we've advanced plans for a year-long computer science course, additional language offerings at elementary school level, and greater communication with the, um, uh, community college for CLRS.
Thank you, Alborz. Um, the next person that will be going is Andrew. Andrew, would you feel free to jump in to share your, your thoughts on these, this question?
Thanks, Vatsidi, and thanks so much to CFAD and all the organizations who worked tirelessly to, uh, pull this forum together. Uh, welcome everyone. Thanks, uh, thanks for having me. Um, I, I'd say to be a strong and effective school committee member, the kind I would strive to be, um, is someone who could work collaboratively and really foster a more participatory, um, and democratic school decision-making process and push for more collaborative school governance. I would listen deeply to other people, learn from them, respect their views. I would, uh, stand in, work side by side with our families, uh, parents, caregivers, educated students, and community organizations that are organizing on the ground to reform our schools. And, and really centering the wisdom and expertise of, of families in the school decision-making process, especially families of color, um, educators and students, uh, to elevate, help elevate their voices. I would stand up for my own deepest values. You know, I would see myself as a, a agent for change who's working to confront the status quo and try to speak my mind frankly, follow my values and be willing to push strongly for what I believe in. And in many cases, this could mean having uncomfortable conversations, for example, with the administration. And in terms of, um, how I, I would know if I was successful would be my ability to get things done. I'd want to see real movement and progress on addressing inequities in our district, finding solutions, which we'll talk more about in subsequent parts of the conversation. I'd want to see Cambridge play a significant role in helping put the Thrive Act in place, uh, to eliminate the harmful MCAS graduation requirement and start to explore more holistic forms of assessment. And educate to address the needs of the whole child with wraparound supports. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Go ahead, David.
Uh, well, thank you to the Cambridge Families of Asian Descent, Cambridge Families of Color Coalition, Chinese American Association of Cambridge, and Cambridge Special Education Advisory Council for organizing and hosting this forum and to everyone watching. An effective school committee member is someone who embodies what I want for our students. I believe we in our schools should be supporting our children to be critical thinkers, to be informed and to be lifelong learners, to seek out and try to understand other perspectives, to collaborate effectively in ways that demonstrate respect for others even in disagreement. We should be helping our children develop resilience, persistence, and adaptability. And in my experience, an effective school committee member needs those qualities as well, resilience, persistence, adaptability. An effective school committee member has vision and values that are steadfast, is collaborative, and is a learner. An effective school committee member works well with others and understands at a deep level that we are interdependent. When I, when I first ran for school committee in 2015, I set out several priorities, including expand pre-K to all four-year-olds, increase the percentage of teachers of color to at least thirty percent, ensure a strong start for our superintendent guided by a shared vision and direction, strengthen upper schools with support for teacher collaboration, curriculum planning, family liaisons, enhanced academic opportunity, and more sports and extracurriculars, and then individualized student success plans for every child. I joined the school committee in January of 2020. Even with the COVID emergency to contend with, in the past four years, I've been able to make substantial progress on those priorities. And there's a lot more to do that builds on this hard-won momentum. The end of another two-year term, I will know I was successful if I've ensured that we followed through on the work we have set in motion. Universal preschool, a cradle-to-career individualized student support system, a renewed commitment to inclusive safe schools, enhanced academic supports for special education and advanced learning needs. And we have continually used our multi-year plan with its ambitious achievable goals for student learning, including third-grade literacy. And I know goal, this goal setting is not enough. I will know I was successful if we have achieved our 2025 district plan targets, including literacy and math, reduction in absenteeism, advanced rates of advanced coursework and earned industry credentials and college credits, graduation rates, and we have set new ambitious and achievable targets and indicators by ensuring and supporting the well-being of each and every child and supporting our dedicated caring expert teachers and staff.
Much thanks, David. We'll pass it over to Elizabeth.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name's Elizabeth Hudson. And before we start, I just want to take the time to say that whenever we're talking about the future, it's natural to criticize what's been done in the past. And I think that the district, I want to note at the top here that I think the district has had some incredible wins, things like universal pre-K, which David just mentioned. And I'll try to call that out throughout my comments today. Um, with that said, I think there are areas where we can be far more effective. And to that end, I would define us an effective school committee member as somebody who does three things. So first, like, an effective member is clear about their priorities. When you talk about the district today, where you get a response and you don't always do, when you talk to the district today, excuse me, it tends to be, uh, they tend to acknowledge your feelings and say, we'll try to do something about that when you raise a problem. Uh, and then you hear nothing for years. No one is going to tell you that your problem isn't real and everybody is going to promise to look into it. But the honest truth is that the district can't have fifty number-one priorities, or it'll get stuck in the mud and spin its wheels and nothing gets done because it's distributing power over too great a surface area. Uh, an effective member is clear as to his or her priorities on the committee, even if that's not always the, the, what, the priorities that you want to hear. They're also clear as to the district's priorities. And here, the committee should be speaking with one voice. If you ask the six members today what the top three issues are this year, you'll get eight different answers. And I dare anybody on this call to look at the website or sit through a committee meeting and try to glean what those answers are independently. An effective committee member is also somebody who's clear as to when a result should be expected and regularly follows up and communicates whether or not we're on track. Committee members, committee meetings today are a morass of new initiatives, policies, frameworks, agendas. It's never clear exactly what you're going to get and when you're going to get it. Finally, an effective committee member is one who uses data to hold the district accountable, and then they use that accountability as motivation to get better. For example, as a committee, we need to confront the fact that despite having identified the achievement gap as a real problem for the past forty years, and despite spending twice as much per student as the average district, we've made little progress in reducing it. And in fact, it's grown by some measures. We should absolutely enable the district to take bold action to solve big problems. But then we also need to follow it up by looking at the data and being clear as to what worked and what has not, so that we can stand on the shoulders of that experience and judge according and, and adjust accordingly. Thank you for the signs. Those are helpful.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We'll move on to Eugenia.
Hi, yeah, I'm Eugenia Schraha. And, um, my thought is that CPS's job is to unlock the potential of students and allow them to succeed after graduation. So it follows from that that the school committee's job is to make sure that the school is living up to that and making progress towards that. I think another way of thinking about it is, um, is this, is this, is CPS making progress on the issues that matter to most families and students in the district? So I thought about three things that I think right now probably are those top issues. And the first one is figuring out allowing families and students to say what's on their mind, which is something that's really sorely lacking right now. So instituting some kind of feedback mechanisms, um, where families and students are regularly polled and their advice and feedback is solicited so that the district knows what's on their mind. And, uh, you know, the same could be said for teachers, staff, principals, nonprofit partners. Um, we really need to, that's, that's tops. Otherwise, you don't know what's on people's minds. And then two other things. First, understanding why Black students, English language learners, and high-need students, that's a state language, uh, that's a state term, are still academically behind where they were pre-pandemic, while white and non-high-need students, which again is a state term, have made gains since the pandemic, um, and taking measurable strategic pilot-tested actions to improve those outcomes. So first, why is it happening? And then test actions designed to try and change that. Um, similarly, understanding why middle and high school mental health statistics are currently showing a major crisis, um, and taking measurable strategic pilot-testing actions to improve those outcomes. And two things I'd point out in the mental health crisis part, um, one is that we still don't have a cellphone policy in the high school. So each teacher has to individually figure out what to do at the beginning of class. And another is strengthening, putting in place a trusted adult program.
Thank you. We'll move on to France.
Hello, hello, everybody. Hello. Thank you for having me. Um, so I think, um, with, with the first question, I think, um, what we're missing is transparency and accountability. Um, I think, you know, growing up in the city of Cambridge, I think we need somebody that, that actually lived it and, um, actually went through the system and knows the, um, what works and what doesn't work. Um, you know, people that's been working in the community for a long time. Let's see, um, I would say, um, someone that brings, um, like I said, um, unique, unique, um, skills such as, um, teaching, um, housing, um, um, like I said, um, education, also, um, trying to push forward and trying to get these kids over into Harvard and MIT. Um, I think for the two years that I think that we can, um, we can assess ourselves to see if we did, um, a good job. I think it's, uh, to see if these grades go up, see if we can get these kids enrolled into colleges and to trade schools and different things like that, because I think the, the lack of confidence right now in the community within the youth is, um, is huge. And I think that's due to not be, being able to work with their hands.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and pass it over to Jose.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for having us here. And thank you for all my, uh, fellow candidates to be, for being here and your answers. Um, I'll share three examples of what I think makes a school committee member effective. Um, the first one is that person needs to be able to bring people together with different points of view and data considerations. I come up with ways of moving forward, hopefully through consensus, but otherwise, otherwise. So for example, as Chair of the Buildings and Graft Subcommittee, I chaired the conversations that, uh, led to the development of the, uh, our COVID healthy, health plan to bring our kids early to school into, into our buildings. Um, so it wasn't easy conversations, but, but it was something that needed to be done. And in the end, that helped not just our district, but the district bring students back into the classrooms. Um, a second thing that I think is important is that that person should be an independent thinker, um, by respectfully but forcefully voicing differences, uh, with their other members of the school committee when necessary. So for example, in my case, I repeatedly stated my concern and frustration of not following through with our promise to do a national search during our last superintendent hiring. Um, that said, once we hired the superintendent, I've been working, uh, with, with them to, to, to support their work. Um, and lastly, I, I, we need to ensure that we make, um, because we make decisions using long-term considerations in, in, in our thinking. So for example, as, as budget co-chair with, um, Vice Chair Rachel, um, we facilitated the sharing of information between the district, school committee members, and other members of the, of the, uh, of the commu- community, coming up with, um, adjustments that we had agreed to, to the budget that led to its approval unanimously. Um, so I hope to be able to continue working on these areas if elected again. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pass it over to Rachel.
Thank you. And good afternoon, everyone. I want to also thank the Cambridge Families of Asian Descent, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the Cambridge Families of Color Coalition, the Chinese American Association of Cambridge. Um, you know, I know a lot of work goes into hosting a forum like this, and you all have curated the questions and gotten great turnout. And, and I appreciate you holding the space. So, um, Alborz started us off by talking about having different educational caregiver expertise. I agree with that. I would, I want to add at least two other parts that I think are key to being an effective school committee member. One is really connecting deeply with students and educators, caregivers, administrators to understand their experiences and perspectives and needs. And then the second is to be effective in making change based on what one has understood. And so I would just say that governing is a very different set of muscles than campaigning, and none of us can make change alone. Uh, we have to organize with community members. We have to work collaboratively to pass any policy or budget change. Um, for me, if I'm fortunate enough to be re-elected, uh, two very tangible indicators of success for the next term would be, one, um, remember Weinstein mentioned the student success plans. I really want to see those implemented in such a way that our students have an adult navigator, not just a piece of software, but someone who sits down with them, finds out what their hopes and dreams are, figures out what supports they need. Um, and two, I want to work on our organizational culture. I think, uh, we need to address staff morale. Um, and through processes like hiring and scheduling is when our processes are more collaborative and educators feel deeply respected, I think we'll be in better shape overall. So those are two tangible things you can hold me to, uh, accountable for in the next term if I'm re-elected. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pass it over to Richard.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for hosting us today. Um, I think for me, being an effective school committee member, I, I think the two main things are probably, one, understanding the role. Some people don't understand that, um, as a school committee member, um, you are asked to be not only a policymaker, not only a advocate, but also the voice for the voiceless. Sometimes you have to speak for people who can't speak for themselves. And that sometimes is the toughest part of the job because you'll be, what will come into question is what is your role? So for me, I don't look at this role as it is always prescribed because I know that there are certain folks that will never tune into a school committee meeting and are depending on those elected officials to really speak for them. I also think that you have to be able to understand, um, how to be effective in a way that's mature as it is to where you sit in the space of all the people trying to make this system move forward. And for me, you really have to have the ability to build relationships so that you can get to four. You cannot be considered a, uh, 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 school committee member who is effective if you're in a person who can throw ideas out, but not, um, one who can persuade the other members to think a little more like you to get things passed as you go on to hold the superintendent and the, of the folks in the district accountable. I think that, um, far too many times, we have people who don't understand that, um, it's easy to be the world's greatest critic. It's a lot harder to be someone who can actually come up with the solutions um, that work for students and families and faculty. And I think that for me, um, I really look at how we think collectively about what excellence is so that you can bring people aboard and really have those honest conversations. I also think it's important as a public official and a school committee member to be transparent and truthful. Um, I, I don't think that, um, we should do anything more to dampen the confidence that people have in the public schools. For me, one of the things that gives me the greatest joy is that my lab and all of the things that I've done as a school committee member, my daughter really taught me as much about what it is to be an effective school committee member because she was a successful student in the Cambridge Public Schools. And for me, that set the bar.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
The signs, I'm sorry. I couldn't see the signs. I don't know where they were, but sorry about that.
It's all right. You're good. Thank you. Uh, we'll pass it over to Bobby.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bobby Travers. Thanks for the organizations hosting this. So, uh, I would say that you have to have clear vision for the school district and also follow the school district plan. You need to hold the superintendent accountable. Um, I'm currently a staff member in the Cambridge Public Schools, and it's very unique for me to be running for school committee. And the morale, uh, of staff is very low at this time. So I want to work collaboratively with all the partners, with students, with educators, with families and stakeholders. And, um, you have to respond to voters, to families and staff. I think a lot of times, I know that current school commanders get a lot of emails, but you need to be, to be an effective school committee member, you need to respond to your constituents. So constituent service is important to me. Also, you, um, have to look at the data. Um, we're all talking about MCAS scores, but it's not all about MCAS scores. It could be, um, local assessments here that we have in the district. And so, um, that's what I think an effective school committee person. And how would you know if you, uh, the second part of the question, uh, the voters in two years would say that you're doing a good job or a bad job because they're the ones that vote you in and out. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Uh, we'll go ahead and move to Caroline. Caroline, uh, you can put yourself off mute and join with, uh,
Okay, great. Thank, thank you so much. I want to thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to speak to, to, uh, the assembly group. Special thanks to the, uh, Cambridge Fair, um, Cambridge Families of Asian Descent for arranging this and for all the participating organizations. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I think to be an effective school committee person, you have to be first, uh, clear about our responsibility as policy leaders and the fact that we are not to supplant the work of the district. Our job is to support the district initiatives to, uh, and legally, we're responsible for the budget. And our job is to make sure that that budget is aligned with the goals and values of the district. In order to be effective, we have to be transparent. We have to, uh, inform, uh, parents as best possible about the, um, things that are happening on a school committee agenda. Um, and we have to be, um, clear about what the policies and plans are. Uh, we also have to make it clear that, uh, the resources are available to every parent. And my goal is to try to strive to do that. Uh, our job is really to represent parents and caregivers on the issues that are important to delivering a quality education project. I have vast experience in this as the Chair of the Concerned Black Staff Report. Uh, along with a, a group of colleagues, I was the first, we were the first group to write a report about the performance of children in the district. And we found back then a troubling tale of two cities that still exist today. Uh, we are troubled by our achievement gap. Uh, my goal, uh, is to work toward to eliminate that uh, and to support the district in that. We've had, um, good, um, work from the superintendent around the frameworks. We've had good work around the initiative for a new math curriculum and for uniformity. What we have to do is follow through. So part of that effectiveness as a school committee person is not only to set policy, to be in a position to evaluate that policy truthfully and honestly and adjust it where it's not working. We have great challenges in Cambridge. I hope to bring to the chair and to the table the thirty-four years that I have as an educator. Uh, and I think when we talk about the kinds of things that we want to work on, uh, I've been the school committee person who's represented the district at the Success Planning Initiative with the Harvard School of Design. Myself and many educators were on the team that did a three-day workshop at Harvard. We are still participating with this program. So that success planning is not just the individual plan that you might want for your child. The notion of su- success planning now is a district-wide initiative where we provide a navigator for each family, for each child in the district. Someone, um, I, thank you. Would you tell me where I will see the signs too as well? I didn't see them.
Yeah, I think the sign is a little bit difficult for folks to see. So I think for the second round, it may be helpful that I set a, a timer so that you all can hear. Um, that's okay. Uh, and I see, thank you, Caroline. I see a hand, um, a hand up. So for the person who's, who needs to ask a question, uh, if you'd like to ask the question, one of the, uh, co-leaders can get back to you. Um, so for this next round, we'll go ahead and start with the second question from Sherry. And just for reminder for folks, you have two minutes and I'll go ahead and set the timer. So it'll go off and, and you'll, you'll know that it's, um, time to quickly wrap up. Thank you.
Hi, thanks, everyone, for your answers. So our second question is, what are your two top priorities in regards to our students who receive special education services?
And David, uh, you are up first.
Thank you. I've been a member of the Special Education and Student Support Subcommittee chaired by my colleague Ayesha Wilson throughout my two terms on the school committee, delving deep into our work in this area. And as Chair of other subcommittees, including Curriculum and Achievement and Communications and Community Relations, have frequently reached out to CPAC to invite participation by leadership and members in discussions that are not quote-unquote "special education issues" because we must integrate consideration of individual student needs into all that we do in our schools. Our approach in Cambridge to special education services must, of course, meet legal requirements, but that should only be a baseline, not our ultimate goal. I know that our special educators and our entire Office of Student Supports sees their work as supporting our children to reach their full potential, not simply to comply with minimal legal requirements. To do so, a top priority is fully staffing our special education services and classrooms so that our dedicated special educators and staff can do their best work. There's a nationwide short, nationwide shortage of special educators. We need to be innovative in how we recruit special educators and how we nurture and retain educators committed to Cambridge as they obtain necessary certifications and expertise. Another priority, I believe we should be offering independent advocates to every family in the IEP, the Individualized Education Program Process. This will help ensure that every family can be confident that their child's needs are being fully met as they navigate what I know firsthand as a parent actually can be a confusing and overwhelming process, even with the dedicated, caring support of our teachers and staff on IEP teams. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Elizabeth.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I'm going to make this a three-point answer, not a two-point answer. So I'll take some liberty there and I'm uh, going to, but I'll still squeeze it into two minutes. And I'm going to use a broad definition here of special education. So first, we want to challenge and support all of our learners. I think it's a fundamental abdication of our responsibility not to challenge and support every single one of our students. This includes kids with a variety of different needs, those who learn in different ways and those who learn at different times. And the district has a history of treating the tension between these groups as a zero-sum game. No one will ever tell you that your kid is not important. We'll all say that we're for helping everybody in parallel, but it's apparent in our actions. I'll use math here as an example. We have kids today who are ready for far more than we're making accessible in our classrooms, and we're the ones holding them back. Again, everybody will say that they don't want this to be the case. They'll talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. Everybody who was on the committee today was either party to the original decision to remove algebra from the upper school curriculum or with, or allowed this status quo to perpetuate. This goes back to being an effective member and being clear about your priorities and showing your results. My priorities are not only advanced learners, though. It's also students who access subjects in different ways. Again, using math as an example, we recently selected a new curriculum, a new math curriculum for our upper schools, illustrative math. And when we, you know, when we were discussing in May how we selected that curriculum, the head of the maths department was asked, what were your criteria? Uh, and her answer, and this is a direct quote, was, I don't know. And one of our criterion should be our ability to adapt our curriculum to students who access, again, the subject in different ways or who think about it and, you know, think about it in a different, you know, in different ways and different styles at different times. And I think that's really important. Uh, second, and Eugenia touched on this, we need to communicate more effectively to our families as we serve students with unique needs. Uh, instead of, for example, sending the new district motto six times, we should be regularly pulling our, you know, regularly pulling our parents with three different questions, questions like, is your kid challenged? Is your kid anxious? Is your kid excited? Put more simply, we should put the burden of communication as we're seeking to serve our students, especially those with special needs on the community, uh, or on, excuse me, on the committee, but not on the community. Uh, and finally, we need to utilize our data as to what is working. We've got a lot of programs that parents give us great feedback on. Those are things that we should be expanding.
Thanks, Elizabeth. We'll go ahead and move forward with France. I mean, I'm sorry, France, I skipped over Eugenia. Eugenia, we'll go back to you.
That's fine. Hi, yeah, well, I actually came to, um, running for school committee through having done some advocacy. That's fine. Hi, yeah, well, I actually came to running for school committee through having done some advocacy around trying to add seats to after-school. And so that was my first time understanding what parents of kids with special needs or special education students face in this district. And I'll talk about it offline because it's not directly related, but they are absolutely discriminated against much more than other families and face hurdles that they should not face. It's pretty infuriating. But at any rate, I hope everyone has read this recent article in the Crimson about a new plan for special ed services. I just wanted to show, you know, it's a short article, but it really describes a chaotic system that has existed up till now for special ed. They're kind of candid about it. I think it's really worth people's read. And they have a new plan, and that's great. But I think the main thing for school committee is to follow through on it and track where that plan is taking us because it has been self-described chaos until recently. This article came out this last week. It's not old. And if you got a new plan, that's great, but let's stay on top of it. So quick things. First, the twenty-twenty-three MCAS scores for students with disabilities show that they are almost the lowest achieving cohort, not improving much since the pandemic. And you can see that in the recent slides on October third, school committee meeting. And for the mental health data, it invariably shows students with disabilities having the worst statistics for mental health after gender career students. And that's on the March first presentation. See, I'm rogue on my follow-up. Anecdotally, I've talked to a bunch of parents and families in the system. And I often hear stories of, of parents fighting the system. That varies depending on where they are. But I think one important thing is to make sure that we are tracking where parents are struggling and making sure that the advocacy does not fall all on parents, but that as a system, we monitor how things are doing.
Thanks, Eugenia. Francis, you're, you can start.
Hello, everybody. Hello. My top two priorities regarding the student achievement, I would say is, is making sure students are, students and parents are heard. And, and, and actually helping them succeed after they graduate. Creating a village where they feel supported by not just their parents, you know, by their teachers, their tutors, the people at the youth centers, their doctors. And also implementing innovative ways that can excite these kids. I think, I think we're doing a lot of things that were done in the past. And it's been going on for the longest time. And I think, you know, I think things change within the, every five to ten years. And I think these kids are, they want to get, you know, connected to Google and Facebook, and they want to be, you know, engineers and different things like that. And I think we just need to catch up. And, you know, and start doing these new things that excite these kids and not the things that bore them. And they feel like they can't use them in everyday life when they graduate to be able to feed their families.
Thanks, Francis. We'll move it over to Jose.
Yes, yeah, thank you. So I'll start by saying that while we tend to focus a lot on the areas where we need to improve at CPSD, we don't often acknowledge the areas where we excel. That said, special education is one of those areas where we definitely need to increase our performance for our students. The following are my two priorities for special education. First, I want to support the district's recent work to integrate the different efforts to meet various needs of students. From those that need additional support to those that need enrichment opportunities to mental health services under one roof of the Office of Student Services, which in turn integrates into the office academics and, and schools. So this acknowledges that students need various types of support in order to take advantage of our education. Secondly, as it was mentioned earlier, the district does have a new plan for special education. Dr. Frank Alves put it out a couple of months ago. And so we need to support him in the implementation of his plan. And some of those areas that he mentioned include separating the role of the psychologist from the team chair in the evaluation meetings so that you can remove implicit bias. The other one is he asked to create a data-driven decision model so that we can have style assignments that ensure workload equity across the district. He also asked for continued capacity building of staff members so they can understand the needs of our exceptional learners and provide meaningful instructional across the district. Finally, one point I wanted to highlight is that he, he asked that in IEP meetings, parents, caregivers, considerations and suggestions and answers are taken into account in the development of, of the, of the plans. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jose. We'll pass it over to Rachel.
Thank you. I'd really like to see more of our students who receive special education services in our general education classrooms. And I know both there's the legally requirement of least restrictive environment, right? But we also know that's better for all students. Just the students on IEPs, but the students who are not on IEPs also. In my, my other job, I worked with schools in Boston, and I've been, I've had the opportunity to be part of a group learning about universal design for learning. Those who haven't heard that term before, it's exactly what it sounds like. Just like we make curb cuts for people who use wheelchairs. If we make the curriculum accessible for everyone, everyone benefits. And so I'm interested in how we can strengthen UDL for our district. Might mean more co-teaching, which we recently, well, one I've heard is working really well in the ninth grade level up this fall, which we've they've staffed a little differently than in the past. And then the administration just brought forward, you know, a funding request to do more co-teaching. So I'm very curious about what it means to do co-teaching at scale. Another priority around special education is evaluating the what I need block. How is that working for our students? They're called win blocks sometimes when you hear at the school committee meetings. How is that working? How is that, how is the new schedule working for students who receive special education services? And what are the impacts on achievement? And then I also, a few of my colleagues up here have said this. I want to be really supportive in doing whatever we can do from the school side to make sure that students who receive special education services can access after-school programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. We'll move to Richard.
Sorry about that. I'm back. So first and foremost, I just want to say that we will never close the achievement gap in the Cambridge Public Schools until we make sure that we are doing better by our students with special needs. People sometimes forget that, and I want to make sure that we iterate that. I also think that for me, one of my priorities is to restore the humanity, care and dignity into the Special Education Department and its relationship with families. For me, this causes me great pain. I think oftentimes, these families are disrespected and oftentimes, they are malign because generally the parents are trying to advocate for their children in, in the way that they ought to be. So for me, this is a very important issue. I also think that for me, I, I really want to spend some time investing in the social emotional health of these children. I think that because of COVID, and from my public health lens, these children are having a tough time just getting back into the regular sort of school environment. And I want to make sure that we support that at all costs. I also think that we want to, for, for me, one of the things that I hear, not only on the doors, not only when I left the school committee, not only now when I'm trying to come back, is that we have to have a real truth in our IEP system so that people are getting exactly what the IEP say and that families don't have to fight, fight, fight for what's supposed to be given to their student as of right. And I think that that's something that an effective school committee member can be an advocate for and hold people accountable to. I also think that we must make sure that we're keeping the channels of communication open. It is a very, 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 very tough job to raise a student in the Cambridge Public Schools and make sure that their success is realized. It is even tougher if your kid has some other challenges. I personally believe that all kids can learn. They just learn differently. And I want to be a strong advocate for that at the school committee level. I would put my record up against anybody in terms of being an advocate and pushing for the policies that will hopefully make families and students experience, whether they have special needs or not, in the Cambridge Public Schools, one that is worth fighting for and one that can realize success. Yep.
Richard, we'll go ahead and move to Bobby.
Hi, everyone. So I went to the Cambridge Public Schools and I had dyslexia and I received services with this Office of Special Education. So this is near and dear to my heart. We need to ensure that we're having consistent services and support for students. And I don't think that's happening now. We need to take the look at the appropriate level of staff caseloads. I know that the school committee did hire a consultant, but that really hasn't been discussed. I'd like to get the information on what, what the average caseload is for, for staff members in the, in the district. Also, the number one and number two position in the department are interim. And we've always had a problem with that department. So we need to take a look at what are we doing wrong in that area? It seems like they're here for one or two years. They move, move on. So you need to have someone that's really gonna run the department effectively. And also, for my second goal, there's a new IEP coming out. I think it's coming out in the spring or maybe it's in the fall. And we need to ensure that families understand that IEP. You know, the new format, need to meet regularly with families, as Richard said. So this is, this department needs to be really, really looked at. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby. We'll move to upwards.
Thanks. Yeah, the, so I mean, the most common reason for IEPs and Cambridge Public Schools right now is learning disabilities. I think that's an important priority for, for what we should look at. And other candidates, I think, have, like, I've mentioned this, but like, you know, in, in general, I think targeted individual learning hands are an important tool for, for everybody for getting guided help. I mean, I myself got help with speech and pronunciation when I was in grade school that helped me enormously in a way for expressing myself. And so I think, you know, you know, the sort of like obvious straightforward thing, you know, which is the right thing here, I think, to do is you know, to, you know, put together, in order to put together a plan for, for all students and especially for students with, I think, disabilities. This will require hiring, I think, extra, you know, special education teachers and, you know, bringing in community involvement with the parents and, and teachers and basically the people who will know the best way to provide an individual plan. I think sort of a second sort of sprung approach to take to this is so that in order for us not to reinvent the wheel each time, building an online platform that sort of better connects, I think, the tools and strategies that are being used across students and across schools would be enormously helpful and a, and a good step and good first step in that direction.
Thank you. Let's move to Andrew.
Thank you. I mean, I think first and foremost, of course, we can't realize education justice for all students and families in Cambridge if we're not centering the needs of our most marginalized students, our students with special needs, especially our, you know, students of color with, with IEPs. And, and that, in order to provide a high-quality inclusive education for our special needs students, we have to provide the additional supports and adequate staffing necessary, as many people have said, to ensure they get access to the opportunity to reach their highest potential in a setting that makes them feel empowered, valued, and not stigmatized in any way. Adequate staffing is critical. There's no way around that. This is one of the sticking points in the contract negotiations between the CEA and the administration right now. Special education teachers feel they're being asked to cover more than they can possibly have time for. And this issue was the basis of the Boston Teachers Union campaign called Inclusion Done Right, where Boston had been hiring these dual or triple-certified teachers to teach inclusion classes as if one person with both general and special ed certification could somehow provide all the specialized supports and instruction that children with IEPs needed in the class. So the BTU pushed back and said, no, one person can't do it all, no matter how qualified our kids and teachers need the adequate specialized support they deserve. So I think having a co-taught classroom, ensuring all our students with special needs have a co-taught classroom with, you know, with a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher working together. And that, as Rachel said, that benefits all students. That's what the research shows. And you need to also have small class sizes. And, you know, it's not just about pulling kids out to work with specialists, but specialists can sort of push in and work with small groups in the classroom, in addition to pulling some students out for one-on-one sessions when needed. And, and districts like Brookline have done this pretty successfully with smaller classrooms that are maybe two-thirds typically developing developing students and one-third of students on IEP. It's costly, but Cambridge has the money. This model requires a lot of staff. We can do it.
Thanks, Andrew. Caroline, you're up next. Caroline, can you unmute yourself to join us?
Hi, thank you so much. I'm just having a little difficulty with connectivity. I think my goal is to make sure that we fulfill all education plans with full knowledge of families and caregivers that provide the greatest, the greatest possibilities for our students. I also think my second plan would be monitoring the effectiveness of plans and placements. And our goal should be to return to the district many of those out placements that we have for students in Cambridge. I support the goals produced by Dr. Alves. I believe he gave a very honest and transparent assessment of our district. The places where we were in compliance and the places where we were not. So my goal as a school committee member is to have the ambitious goal of supporting that work and providing effective evaluation and supporting the district in evaluating the plans that we put out. As an educator with thirty-four years of experience in Cambridge, I was the general ed teacher in the college algebra classroom with a special educator. And all of our students benefited from that experience. So I have actual online, real-time experience working with students with special needs, but treating them with and within the general classroom as scholars and as students capable of learning. And we, myself and my team of special educators, I've worked with several of them, were very successful in having students not only meet their IEP plans, but having some of them come off of the IEP plan. So we have to make sure that that staff is supported. We're adequately staffed in terms of equality of the special educators we have. They're fully certified and qualified. But we do have the same gap that many districts have in turn, in terms of trying to fulfill all of our staffing obligations. So the main goal is to make sure that we're fully staffed, that we have, that we fill all of our positions. But again, supporting the educators and monitoring the plans with full transparency and involvement of parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline. Thanks, everyone. We're doing well on time. We're going to move on to our third question. And Zhiyuan will move us along with the third question to everyone.
Thank you. So here we go. So the question number three is, what are your areas of concern regarding student achievement in Cambridge Public Schools? Thank you.
Francis, you'll start us with this conversation.
Hello, everybody. Back at it. Yes. My areas of concerns are, I would start off with safety, of course, because, you know, with safety, everything is difficult to, to actually wrap your, your, your brain around. I believe a lot of our kids in, in, in the schools are actually living in survival mode. So it's actually hard to obtain the, the to give them. I think we need wraparounds.
Francis, there was an accidental mute. Can you turn it back on? Sorry, we'll, we'll give you your few seconds back.
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Yes, yes. I said, I believe a lot of our kids are living in survival mode, which hinders their, their, their way of learning, such as, you know, your lights being off, the lack of food, issues with parents at the home. So I think, you know, having wraparound services that help around with everything can actually help families push forward. Another one of my concerns are the lack of teachers and, the lack of teachers in, in, in classes, of course. I think a lot of kids are actually being, you know, pushed up to just graduate. And by the time they graduate, they don't have the, the skills and the tools to actually do what they need to do. Let's see. I think with, with Cambridge being top five cities in the world, I, I believe our kids are, are not receiving those, those benefits. I think we need to kick in more money into education. I think we need to build stronger partnership within, within the businesses surrounding the city so our kids can actually So our kids can actually um, outgrow housing and actually, you know, put some food on the table. Um, we need to teach them financial um, financial literacy courses. I think we need to start teaching them things that actually work, um, and and things that actually help them provide and and ha- and then and help them become um, positive and um, strong um, citizens.
Thank you. Jose, take it from.
Yes, thank you. And I echo many of Franz Pierre's comments uh, about things we should be doing. Um, I'll start by say, by stating sort of the obvious that opportunity gaps have an immense impact on all of our students being able to take full advantage of a great education in our in our district. So here are uh, four areas that I that I want to support. One is early education is key. Universal preschool matters. So I will support the successful role that UPK and in our schools, while at the same time minimizing any impact in our kindergarten enrollment. Um, equitable access to advanced mathematics is a concern. Uh, I will support multiple paths for students to access advanced mathematics from Algebra One in eighth grade to compressing early mathematics in high school, while at the same time I will continue to advocate for students to have strong foundations of middle school mathematics. Um, the third one is that bilingual education has shown that it's one way to address opportunity gaps. Um, and also provides other learning benefits. So I will support the expansion and or addition of more bilingual immersion schools in in the district. And finally, Cambridge Montessori has also proved to be the highest uh, achievement growth for all of our subgroups in the district. So again, I will support to study how to eh, poorly see if we can expand uh, the the Montessori program in our in our district and or at least extend it to sixth grade, which is uh, recommended by best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Rachel.
Thanks so much. Um, what concerns me most is that our achievement gaps between student demographic groups have, which were wide before COVID, have widened. And so less than one in three of our black students, low-income students, multilingual learners, and actually for multilingual learners, it's more like one in ten. Um, we're meeting grade level expectations before the pandemic. And to see those numbers go down is the wrong direction. And so that's true, not just for achievement, it's also true for student growth. I, like most people in Cambridge, believe that demographics do not determine a child's um, capacity or potential. And so, um, I'll tell you, like, I do, I agree with Jose Luis that um, the Cambridge preschool program will help close some early uh, opportunity gaps. I also, my personal theory is that it's not just about curriculum and um, reform, but that we're not approaching instruction with the needed equity lens. And so accounting for our own implicit and explicit bias um, to the degree we need to, you know, I was happy last week to hear Superintendent Greer say that she's asked the chief of equity to be attached to the hip to the chief of uh, academics and schools. I think we all know that equity has to be infused into everything. It can't be this little project that happens on the side. Um, a distinct but related concern for me is that content be deep and rigorous. Um, we know that students, and I've seen it, you've probably seen it with your own kids. Um, they're more engaged when they feel that they're learning something relevant to their lives. And so, um, that with the experienced learning, not just through isolated dedicated skill building, but through hands-on experiential learning. That's why I pushed for an internships coordinator at the high school. Well, I wanted to be sure interdisciplinary projects could continue under the new scheduling guidelines. And to wrap, I will just say, the more um, our education can build on student interests, the more they'll be engaged and successful in school. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard, go ahead and take the mic.
Thank you, and I appreciate the question. So first of all, uh, my areas of concern with the achievement gap are uh, s- the same as when I left the school committee. We need to ensure that there's excellent instruction in every classroom measured by student achievement. We are not seeing this. I don't, don't hate the messenger. Uh, but the scoreboard does not lie. Rachel just talked about um, where we're at uh, post-COVID. And we've been in a bad place for a long time. I once said that black boys are an endangered species in the Cambridge Public Schools. And I didn't say it to be in in, to be inflammatory, but it was the truth. They are doing particularly bad, and it's an indictment on our city, and this is something that has to change. We're gonna have to have honest conversations about classroom instruction. Do we have the boots on the ground to teach high-level, rigorous curriculum to all students across the board? Differentiated instruction is easy to say, much harder to do. And so we need to have that conversation. We're gonna have to pull the uh, teachers' union in and have real honest conversations about where we're trying to go. Um, the MCAS has been a smokescreen. I've said for years, it's about high standards, not high stakes. Um, you take the test away. By the way, my daughter did well, advanced on both sides. So I've seen the success. I don't acquiesce to the position that black kids can't pass the test. But if you take the test away and look at how many of our kids remediate at community college or when they go to college, it is stunning, right? So for me, it's not about the test. It's become a smokescreen um, to be a scapegoat on why we're not achieving in the Cambridge Public Schools and doing right by our children. I think that far too many of our children um, need to really be in a position that empowers them to be lifelong learners and empowers them to be scholars. This takes family support. This takes looking at the curriculum and looking at all the other wraparound services that we have that can get us there. For me, the 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 sum of all my fears is this, that when particularly kids of color um, don't get a good education in the public schools, their fate is far worse. It's not about not getting a job or getting a fancy position. It's about maybe ending up in prison or worse. And so for me, this is my most um, the 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 issue that I cared most deeply about and that I plan to focus on as a school committee member if I am fortunate enough to be elected.
Thanks, Richard. Uh, you're next, Bobby.
All right. So um, I think we need to take a look at how the instruction in the classroom is being delivered. Um, also, we need to focus on what students' needs. I know um, the innovation agenda is about twelve years old now. There really hasn't been a study on what's working in the middle schools. I know the middle schools need some attention. I know that we have a strong primary program, but it seems when we come to middle schools, we see kids leaving the system and then coming back in high school. And also, we need to look, take a look at equitable class sizes. I work at a school where we have uh, we're capped out at twenty-five kids. We have kids with twenty-five kids in the class, and we go to other classes in the district, and we have classes with eight and thirteen. So we need to take a look at what what's the school that I work at is doing well and the school in other parts of the city, what they're not doing well. And I know we're we're a a city, a district of school choice, so maybe we need to take a look at school choice. Thanks.
Thanks, Bobby. Abors, feel free to jump in.
Um, I think for achievement specifically, there are there are three main concerns. One, which is the general pandemic-related um, across-the-board educational losses, especially in reading and math. Although math has made in some groups, I think, a bit of a bounce back recently. Um, but I think that we should, I mean, one, one of the factors here is that we should sort of facilitate the process for parents and and community members to to organize smaller groups to, I think, address these. Um, from conversations with many folks, um, I found it, I think, very difficult, you know, to be able to start these groups given the litigious concerns the district, that the district has, um, which I appreciate, but um, balance, I think, is best to remove, I think, a lot of the red tape here. Um, uh, I think a second concern is uh, sort of uh, having um, a relative lack of course materials right now that's sort of well-suited for the changing world today. Um, and this is uh, and I think a couple of others sort of candidates alluded to this. Um, this involves um, things like, um, you know, financial literacy and and sort of like, um, you know, like lifestyle-related courses, in addition to things like statistics, data science, computer science, and um, a lot of tools that um, are going to be necessary for um, our kids to be able to succeed tomorrow. Um, you know, which I think, again, we should be able to take advantage of the local community. Um, uh, like leaders that we have at with Harvard and um, you know, MIT and some of the world's best schools in our backyard to to help expand. Um, I think the third major issue, you know, is of course the racial sort of uh, and socioeconomic um, achievement gap. And, you know, while there's a lot that goes into addressing that particular issue, I think one thing I would like to give the current school committee a lot of credit is for is for working to expand um, the uh, school that they lend uh, for K to eight, which I think will be a big factor.
Thanks. Andrew, feel free to jump in.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think first and foremost, uh, looking at the racial and socioeconomic opportunity and achievement gaps. You know, the pandemic reinforced education disparities faced by our by our cities, low-income students, our students of color, our English learners, students with disabilities. We've also seen some of the numbers in twenty-twenty-three in grades three to eight. Almost seventy percent of the city's white students met or exceeded expectations on math. Uh, you know, almost triple the rate of our African-American students at twenty-four percent. And then our students of color are facing countless other disparities in access to AP courses, graduation rates, college readiness and enrollment. And these pipelines of educational inequality then translate right into housing, job and income inequality. You know, I I grew up in Cambridge Public Schools. I saw this firsthand. You know, and now they're saying that over twenty-two percent of of white Canobrian adults are employed in the innovation economy in the biotech, while only four percent of of black adult Canobrian adults are. I don't see my friends growing up benefiting from the uh, you know, the these these new industries are being employed there. Discipline disparities are a huge issue. The suspension rate for students with disabilities is two and a half times higher still than the district average. And research shows that one-ninth grade suspension can double the students' chances of dropping out, right? So we need to take a holistic approach, provide the additional social um, and emotional support, social and academic supports, wraparound services for students and their families to address non-academic and non-academic uh, related barriers to learning. Um, you know, we need, of course, we need to uh, uh, hire and retain more educators of color, because there's extensive research that shows if a student has a same-race teacher, that's gonna lead to higher attendance, academic performance and graduation rates. Um, and you know, and we need a more holistic, rigorous and anti-racist curriculum that better reflects our students' diverse cultures and histories and also much more robust outreach and authentic partnerships with families, especially marginalized families. Because all the evidence shows if you bring, build stronger bonds of trust between schools and families, it actually works and improves academic outcomes, and it's crucial for the life of the school.
Thank you, Andrew. Caroline, feel free to jump right in.
Hi, thank you. Um, when we did the Concern Black Staff Report and we talked about the achievement gap, we used the district's data around performance in our own coursework uh, to talk about the achievement gap. It had nothing to do with MCAS at that time. We know that that gap has grown larger, whether we look at MCAS or whether we look at our results. And one of the things I'd like to do, I am for transparency and accountability. And I think we have to revisit the kind of data that the Concern Black Staff Report produced and disseminated. One of the things that happened, and when the black students found out that they were performing below grade level, they in turn, through the Black Student Union Head and Assembly, they challenged each other and to challenge the staff to do better by them. So I think it is uh, when we talk about the achievement gap, we have to talk about the transparency of our data about how students are performing in the actual courses that we offer, in addition to all the other measurements of data. In addition, I think it's unconscionable that a student can go through the Cambridge Public School system and not have a teacher of the same race or ethnic group. We knew that when Dr. Bill McLauren became, he was assistant principal, but while he was assistant principal, he taught AP Biology. The enrollment of black children in their class and children of color in that class increased, as well as their performance. We also sort of saw the same thing when Julie Chin was the advisor for uh, was the um, AP Biology teacher. So we know, and we also know from statistics, that having a person of the same race background helps. It not only helps the children of color, but it helps all children, especially the children, uh, the not, the 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 non-diverse children to see the potential of all people in the classroom. So this is something that we have to work on. We have a large complement of black men in our district, but they are coaches. They are disciplinarians. We need more of them in the classroom and more of them in the academic classroom. Uh, we also have to deal with the fact that uh, the achievement gap is growing. It was, it was bad. Thank you.
Thank you. David, we'll move on to you.
My overriding concern regarding student achievement and CPSD is our persistent racial, economic and gender opportunity gaps. Acknowledging the limitations of MCAS, recent data showed Cambridge is one of the very few communities returning close to pre-pandemic levels and show we also maintain pre-pandemic opportunity gaps, and in fact, those gaps have widened in some cases. We need to close those gaps. Believe the, I believe the Individualized Student Success Plan system I've advocated for and we're now developing with support from the Harvard Grad School of Ed's Education Redesign Lab will be a key lever for that change. We must fully partner with the city and community organizations, businesses and the trades to ensure that cradle-to-career, no child falls through the cracks or lacks support to reach their potential. We have so much in Cambridge. We need to know that each child and every family is consistently connected with the supports and opportunities that will let them thrive and flourish. Every child in Cambridge connects with our schools, and we bear responsibility for ensuring every child is truly known and is connected with those supports and opportunities. And we have a sometimes invisible student achievement challenge. We have unintentionally set ceilings for our students when we should not. We're failing to ensure each child in Cambridge gets the identification and supports they need for advanced learning needs. We have an important commitment at every level of staff and administration to differentiated instruction, and we must ensure targeted tier one, two and three supports are provided to each student as needed, including those arriving with the greatest needs, those already achieving at the highest levels, those not targeted by interventions designed for either of those cohorts, and twice-exceptional students who may need additional supports to reach grade level in some areas and are ready to go far beyond in other areas. This means supporting our educators so they have what they need to reach this shared goal, including staffing, teachers, liaison, social workers, specialized staff, collaboration time, materials and resources. I'll also note that I've been working throughout this term on Algebra One, and I played a key role in securing our district's commitment to Algebra One for all before ninth grade, writing a motion joined by Rachel Weinstein and Caroline Hunter that called for equitable access to all on a specific timeline that was reflected in the plan announced by the superintendent and the mayor in August. I'm committed to seeing that we follow through and meet this announced timeline with educationally sound practices that support our students to succeed at this level in math, including building on the work of our educators this year on complex instruction. I just want to also say I appreciate Jose Luis, Jose Luis's point regarding expansion of bilingual and Montessori education. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Elizabeth, feel free to take the mic.
Hi again, everybody. Okay, so the question here is, what are your areas of concern regarding regarding student achievement? I'm gonna talk a little bit about math. I'm gonna talk about Montessori, language immersion, and again, about our teachers, which I know we'll come back to in the last question as well. So first, bringing it back back to math as an example of an area of concern in core academic subjects. Before I do, I want to say that I'm focusing on math, not because it's the only subject that matters, but because it's a good exemplar. Analogous patterns have happened in other areas of the curriculum. With that said, I think it's flatly unconscionable that even with our relatively slow math math schedule with Algebra One right now begun only in high school, that only half of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations in math. Let me repeat that. Only fifty-three percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations district-wide in math today. This is bad. Science and math are key languages of success, and there are incredible opportunities for kids today in STEM fields, opportunities for which we're not properly preparing them. And to be clear, I'm not talking about success here in units of acceptance to Harvard or MIT. Math and science can be incredible tools and are the foundation of success in many vocations. And vocation notwithstanding, they can bring our students joy, excitement and understanding. I say this because I'm an engineer, and I wouldn't have the opportunity to live in Cambridge today without the foundation that the public, the STEM foundation that the public school system gave me. I've got three sons who will go through the CPS system, and I want them and all of their peers to have the same. I also want to call out Caroline Hunter here, as I have the opportunity for regularly asking for receipts when it comes to the work we've done to improve our math curriculum. My goal is to ensure that we do more of that, and I want to thank her for incredible work there. My second area of concern is the expansion of our special programs. I spoke at the top about one of the characteristics of an effective member being that we use our data. This is an area where the data are pretty clear. We have many programs in our district that work pretty well, including but not limited to our language immersion programs and our Tobin Montessori program. These are things that we should be expanding. And again, this is something Jose Luis touched on this, but this is something I think is important, and I want to thank him for the work that he's done here. We should be making more seats available in those programs. And we should be looking in juxtaposition at the schools that are struggling and take action there. Finally, oh, okay, great.
Thank you. Eugenia, go ahead and um, go with the third, third question.
All right. So so happy to hear a lot of people pointing out this increasing disparities in uh, different scores. Uh, I think it's really important that the CP, that school committee pushed CPS to understanding why before we jump in with a lot of um, answers as to what we should do. Um, I thought the recent presentation that CPS did on the MCAS numbers um, lacked some candid information. For example, there's huge disparities between some of our elementary schools with some of the top-performing elementary schools having scores that are over twice as high as the scores of the lowest-performing schools. So what's going on? Like, first, present that. Be candid about it, own it. And number two, investigate. Find us some answers. And I think school committee needs to really push on what is- Find us some answers. And I think school committee needs to really push on what is going on until we get an answer that makes sense. And um, you know, something that goes hand in hand with this is when you find things that are working, let's replicate them throughout the system. And uh, a program that's working, let's expand it. Definitely uh the bilingual programs and the Tobin Montessori, not to repeat what everyone's already said. I just also have to add in that Caroline's point about transparency leading to change where she talked about um black students organizing themselves when they found out their own scores. I, I'd love to know more about that and that's very exciting and that's why transparency matters so much. Um, quickly in my last minute, reading and math are two of my areas of concern with CPS, which is kind of ridiculous. Um, reading, I know we're trying to get rid of discredited programs, but CPS has not told that to families yet. And as a person whose kid is struggling with reading, who's coming back with books from Heinemann, which is one of the discredited programs. And I can show you, I should have brought it. I, I could show you the books that he came back with. I think it's really scary. In terms of math, if you read my weekly newsletter, you'll see that when they came out with this program to get every kid to learn math in ninth grade. Mo- multiple school committee members, uh four, four school committee members said this has happened multiple times before. The math coach boasted about how kids who are advanced are doing Sudoku in class and that's okay. It's definitely not. And we lacked basic data to understand. I don't think the program is going to work without a lot of pushing and tracking. Of how, tracking of how it's going. Sorry, tracking how it's going.
Yeah. So these questions are wonderful, right? They really get you all into um bringing up your passion, sharing more about um. Uh, C, uh CPS. And we have a, a last question and Jennifer will be starting us off with the fourth question.
Thank you so much. Uh, so for the last question, from the Building Equity Bridges report. We know that educators of color are frequently asked to carry a heavier load and are not getting the mentoring and support they need. How would you change how all teachers of any race are evaluated? And how teachers of color are supported and compensated to help retain educators of color? What other policies would you enact or support in order to retain educators of color?
Thanks for that question, Jennifer. We'll start with Richard.
Long question. Make sure I stay on, on task. But so first and foremost, um. I think it's really, really hard to have mentors when you don't have peers in the building to mentor you. So we'd have to really think creatively about how we would go about, particularly in the case of teachers of color, how we would set those mentors up. That being said, for me, I think um we need to be fair in take. With more understanding what we're doing with our professional development dollars to make sure that we're supporting teachers in the right way. Oftentimes, professional development is seen as an afterthought. And I think it can be one of the most effective ways to support teaching and learning by supporting teachers. I'd also say, um, you know, as part of a school committee and I. Had great hesitance in moving the bar um to thirty percent only because we hadn't reached the benchmark that we had before for teachers. So that was an ambitious goal to look at thirty percent, but we had only at the time met the uh, the, the criteria for the um. Uh, people in the buildings, the principals and assistant principals. What I would do differently though, in terms of evaluation, is I would look at a three sixty evaluation system. Where we could have uh honest and authentic conversations so that teachers could really understand. Um, how they're being evaluated by their students' parents and really set that system up so that they could um be part of the conversation. I don't believe that evaluation is a punitive thing. I think that evaluations are set up to help um professionals become better at their craft. One of the things that I would do much differently um is I would incentivize our hiring process as it relates to bringing on new talent. Um, I work at the Cambridge Health Alliance. If I would bring on a nurse tomorrow, I would get ten thousand dollars. I think that we're in such greater need for educators of color and high level educators um to teach in our schools. That I would incentivize that we have the money to do it. I would do it yesterday. My last point would be this. The last time we moved any indicator of diversity was when the school committee tied. The hiring of staff, black and brown professionals to the superintendent's contract. That is what moves. Um, I would do that tomorrow. It's the only way that we've proven the Cambridge Public Schools that we can make this happen.
Thanks, Richard. I'll pass it over to you, Bobby.
All right. So we need to actually make sure that we're doing evaluations because currently. I don't think we're doing evaluations up to uh what they're supposed to be. How can an evaluator, evaluator have a load of thirty to forty teachers to evaluate in a year? So we need to take a look at that. Um, we need to look at the exit interviews. Why are, are teachers of color leaving the school district? We've repeatedly asked for this information and it hasn't been released. Why is that? What is the school district covering up? We need to also start a program at the high school. There is a shortage of T, uh, teachers in the, in the world. And so we have a pathway for paraprofessionals right now. That's a great start. Why aren't we working to enhance that? Um, in the current contract, there's a peer evaluation component of, of the contract. Why aren't we taking advantage of that? Um, I could go on, so I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Abors, feel free to take the mic.
Thanks. Yeah, I think, well, you know, obviously this is a very complicated question that we can't fully explore in two minutes. But the most straightforward factor I think is increasing, increasing pay. Um, and I think, you know, something which maybe isn't uh discussed, I think enough is that in, in addition to simply increasing the amount. Um, I think we should sort of change, uh, consider changing the incentives uh associated with the current compensation structure. Um, and I think a main factor here is sort of like that, um, like master's degrees, for instance, you know, take time, money. Uh, and have pretty consistently been shown to have no correlation with teaching gain. Um, yet we base a significant part of a teacher's compensation uh increase on whether they, they have one. Um, and you know, I think, like in this case, for anybody who's already gone through that process, you know, I think the compensation structure should be grandfathered in. But you know, I mean, looking for example, at the twenty twenty census, we actually lose um a lot of candidates. Uh, and especially candidates of color, uh, when we go from the um, you know, bachelor's to the master's sort of incentive structure requirement. And so I, I actually think that, you know, removing the master's degree compensation requirement and replacing it with. You know, systems that a lot of people have already discussed in terms of a combination of, um, you know, uh, a teacher, student, administrator. Um, a teacher, parent, administrator, feedback approach alongside, you know. Um, you know, the devils of the details, but you know, like achievement gain metrics, um, I think is a, a much more effective way. Um, and then the second major factor I think here that I would focus on is, is recruitment. Like in some sense, I think right now we wait for, you know, people to come to us, you know, we put it up. Um, and I think really going and finding people who may not necessarily see themselves as potential educators. Um, but I think going and recruiting them, um, you know, and putting in the legwork will, will pay off. Um, and we should support the sort of organic support groups that build once we've increased those numbers.
Andrew, the mic is all yours.
Thanks. Um, such an important question. Uh, in terms of evaluation, um, I think it's really all about uh principals having direct relationships with interactions and direct observations. Of teachers in the classroom. Um, and I, you know, and I think that. Test scores are a poor measure of teacher effectiveness. That's why I've pushed back on using MCAS test scores to evaluate educators. That would only further narrow the curriculum and increase prep, pressure on our educators to focus just on drilling kill test prep. Rather than holistic learning that stresses problem solving skills and critical thinking. Um, in terms of recruiting and retaining educators of color, we absolutely need to be more energetic and proactive. Going to job fairs, recruiting from around the country. Um, and as was mentioned, I support the demands of our educators in securing an adequate wage increase. That goes beyond that proposed by the current school committee and makes public school teaching comparable with other professional knowledge workers, professional knowledge workers. Otherwise educators of color will continue to leave the profession and potential new teachers will pursue other career options. The unaffordable cost of living is a barrier, um, especially for our educators of color. We always have to connect education justice and housing justice. We should be providing affordable housing and a housing subsidy for potential teacher candidates. Our educators of color need more uh support groups, affinity groups. Um, and opportunities to share best practices among same grade level educators. It should, funding for the Educators of Color Coalition should be restored by the district and increased. Um, and any mentoring among peers that has to happen after contracted hours. Um, educators should be getting good stipends for those efforts. And again, the pathways for professionals program is key. The partnership between Leslie and Cambridge Public Schools. We need to invest in such partnerships that provide a homegrown pipeline for our local paraprofessionals. Many of whom are, are educators of color um to earn their masters and their teaching licenses. And the Boston um teacher's residency is another fantastic model that Cambridge could follow.
Thank you. Caroline, feel free to jump in.
Thank you. Um, the Concerned Black Staff was actually the affinity group for educators of color. Uh, and we provided not only support to each other. We not only monitored district practices, but we also developed a scholarship program where we gave scholarships to students of color. So we were a very active and substantial organization. Uh, that grew out from the teachers of color themselves. Uh, first of all, all teachers should and must be evaluated as persons who participated in the evaluation system. It is a system of support and development of goals and uh people don't understand it. The job of the evaluator is to do classroom observations. Um, both um announced and unannounced classroom observations in with the teacher over the course of the year. To sit down and develop goals after those observations. Uh, to conduct the evaluation with the proper data and information. And then to set up a system of support with that particular educator so you can work on any goals that they had not uh achieved. And support them in additional goals. So that's the, the, the process allows itself to do that. I was also, as a teacher, I also had the opportunity to do student evaluat- evaluations. So my students always were given a chance to anonymously evaluate me and my performance, which I think is an opportunity at the high school level. Uh, that should be embraced by more educators and could possibly be in addition to what we require. But there is an opportunity to get that kind of feedback under our current evaluation system. I will go to the fact that the Building Equity Bridges um evaluation said two things. Educators of color are not being valued, centered and supported. And so I think uh in addition to a firm, significant program of recruitment that we uh make public and acknowledge. That we do some outright outside recruiting because when I joined the Cambridge Public School System, we had a significant, um. Although not adequate, but a, a large number of educators of color. And that um notion has not been maintained and upheld. The other thing that the Building Equity Bridges talked about, which I think is significant, we don't talk about enough, is white privilege. Whiteness, privilege and bias. We have to look at our curriculum. We have to look at our classrooms. We look at, I have to look at our teachers, for examples of bias. And uh, the fact that we had our students talking about microaggression before the pandemic. We have to do an all out. Not only supporting educators, but children of color. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David, feel free to jump in.
Thanks. A more racially diverse teaching staff benefits all students. We've adjusted our recruitment strategies to reach and attract a more diverse pool of educators, including where and when we share career opportunities and we must continue those efforts. I support the continued expansion of our educator pathway program that provides financial support for current CPS instructional aides and teachers on provisional or emergency licensure. To pursue their teaching licenses and complete a master's degree in education. These programs helped increase diversity of our faculty and creates a career ladder for educators who already know and are dedicated to our schools and children. We must retain the great educators we hire by making sure CPSD is a great place to work. We must not fall into the trap of putting the responsibility for dealing with all things that intersect with race on the shoulders of our educators of color. Especially given the added challenges new teachers often face, we should not add additional tasks for these educators alone. To make effective, meaningful progress, everyone in our school committee, community must share the responsibility of creating an inclusive, anti-racist and equitable educational community. Overall, we should be sure that our early career educators don't feel pressured to extend themselves beyond what is manageable. So they can develop their practice and build their careers in Cambridge in a sustainable way and become those longtime Cambridge educators my kids and generations of CPS students have been transformed by. And we must ensure we are properly supporting our educator-led affinity groups, our employee resource groups, which play a key role as a space for mutual support and connection around areas of shared identity. Such as race, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation. Regarding educator evaluation, I'm a former classroom teacher and I know that evaluation based on one-off drop-in observations did not support my growth as an educator. We need to support peer mentoring for our educators and ongoing opportunities to collaborate with other educators to develop and grow their practice. Richard's point about three sixty evaluations is well taken, as is his suggestion. We look outside of our schools for peer mentors as needed. We cannot use standardized tests to determine the effectiveness of an individual educator. The results don't give us useful information for that purpose.
Thank you. We'll pass it over to Elizabeth.
Sometimes some of these big hairy questions are a lot simpler than they seem. We can't recruit and retain the best education professionals, including teachers of color, if we don't compensate them fairly. In contrast, our teachers today, as everybody probably knows, are working without a contract. Uh, we've offered them a two point five annual pay raise, which is less than the rate of historical inflation. And while the superintendent enjoys up to three point five percent, we spend twice as much as the average Massachusetts, Massachusetts School District. Each year, but we only pay our teachers one percent more than the average teaching salary in, in the state. Our administrative positions have grown in addition, while our teaching positions have sunk, have shrunk. And as we ask our teachers to help us improve in areas like math and reading, which we touched on above, where again, half of our students are failing to meet grade level expectations. We should be offering them help, more hands in classrooms. Instead, we're opening up job recs for, for example, a chief strategy officer. I guarantee you, if you ask a teacher today, whether or not they prefer a strong colleague or a new central administrator, they'd say the former. And our teachers don't have a voice on the committee. One way to support our teachers is to give them a non-voting seat at the table. We also need to look at the teachers, teachers exit interviews, as Bobby pointed out already. CFAD has the CEA forum linked on its website. Uh, in there you can watch in that video, you can see a discussion of the exit interviews. And they were brought up, but nobody's actually, as Bobby already pointed out, ever presented data from these interviews. Why are we looking at these? This goes back to being an effective committee member. Finally, once we've built this strong foundation, then we can action some of the incredible additional support that many of the other candidates have already spoken about. Caroline, Bobby, Richard, Andrew, these, these programs that we've touched on, those are great additions to a strong foundation. We can also get creative. Think about things like prioritizing affordable housing for our teachers. Eighty percent of them live outside the district. Being able to reside within the district would be an incredible additional benefit that we could provide. And something again that we can use to recruit and then retain the best educational talent. Bottom line, there's no path towards ensuring that more students have a more positive school experience that doesn't run through our educators. That's a difficult job and we can't ask the world from them without providing support in return. This means compensation, support and fair evaluation.
Thank you. Eugenia, you're next.
Um, yeah, well, one thing that hasn't come up is that um principals are the ones who are in charge of hiring and retaining teachers. And I think it's important to check in with them. There is some low hanging fruit. For example, something I have heard from principals is that. Um, the budget gets decided too late and so they miss out on hiring people, particularly teachers of color. So. Uh, you know, doing your basic legwork, i- I think is really important and that's part of the importance of feedback, listening to principals. Um, okay, I'm just going to do exit interviews really quick, but I want to make it my trademark to challenge sitting school committee members to bring us a report of their next school committee meeting. Because in September, we had a teachers' union forum. It's uh up online on CCTV. And we were told that. People were following up on what the superintendent had said, that she has this exit interview data and that we were going to get it. So I'd love to see it the next school committee meeting. That's a challenge. Drama is happening right now. Um, but moving on, um. For me, this is anecdotal. When I've talked to teachers, the number one piece of feedback that I have heard is they don't listen to me, like administrators don't listen. And so um, I, like, I started off in housing advocacy. I could not. Be more strong on the fact that we want our teachers to live close to the schools or in Cambridge ideally. It really helps with so much things like. Can they stay for after school? It's very important. Compensation matters. But it's equally critical that teachers feel listened to. And as a former high school teacher in the Bronx, I would say that was. Something that didn't exist in my school and part of why I did leave or with administration, not the students, as so many people usually say. And then finally, I cheated and I talked to a local principal. He's not a principal anymore, but he was one. He was highly successful here in Cambridge. Working with low income students. And here's what he said. Authentic opportunities for input and voice. Really listen. Share decision-making rationale, especially when it's not what the teachers wanted, i.e. get buy-in. And then pay people for their time, especially folks of color.
Thank you. We'll move on to you, France.
Hello, everybody. Hello. Yes, um, my thing is, um. It, it bothers some to me because I think we've been dealing with this, with these situations forever, right? Um, and I think um the focus is the youth, the focus is the kids and the, and the focus are the teachers, right? Um, these are the people that take care of our kids, right? And the kids are the future. Um, I think it's a very.
Um, I think it's a very simple thing to um, to actually fix. Um, as in, you know, paying the teachers more so they're not burnt out. Helping the teachers have more support, such as having two to three teachers in the class, male and females, due to the way some students learn. Some students learn, you know, better off of females. Some some students learn better off of males. So I think having that that option and having that flexibility within our students and the teachers would be very, very helpful. Um, I think school, school right now seems pretty stiff. Um, it seems, it seems like it needs to be a certain way, or you need to learn it a certain way. Like such as if you're in class and your teacher's trying to teach you it this way, and you learned it that way from a whole different teacher, it becomes like a big problem. So things like that. Um, so I think, you know, also coming together as parents, um, coming together as um, the community to actually um, making sure that our needs are met, right? Um, it's it's not the wants. I think all our wants could be very different, but our needs are are all the same, right? We want great education for our kids. We want them to strive and 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 get um, um, go to great colleges or become, you know, great leaders in the community. So I think we just need to buckle down and come together and either form a union um, that actually gets things done for real. And um, and I think everything would move forward. And definitely listening to the teachers, because they're the ones that's actually, you know, actually the ones doing the job. I feel like they don't, they don't really have a say um, on what's going on. Um, and I think that's very troubling. And me have, so growing up in Cambridge, I think one of my teachers was Miss Ford that actually helped me um, transition because she had a kid. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Franz. We'll move on to Jose.
Yes, um, thank you. Uh, so yeah, I'll echo uh, Andrew's and David's comments about the importance of uh, pathways for um, paraprofessionals at Leslie University for them to get their master's degree. That's a great way to to build the the pipeline of of teachers of color. Um, but I guess be- before I I I go further, I do wanna give some background. I mean, the the Building Equity Report was published in twenty nineteen. I mean, the challenges described there obviously continue. At the same time, we have made a lot of progress since that report was published. Um, one was the this district and school committee, we passed uh, a definition of equity and racial equity back in twenty nineteen. Then in twenty twenty, uh, in response to the publication of the report, uh, we established an anti-racist vision and mission statements in the district. And then shortly after that, then we created the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Belongings headed by Manuel Fernandez as Chief Equity Officer and Leslie Jimenez as the Director of Equity. So while we have all these proactive efforts, um, one of the things that we really need to focus is is on on having our schools reach their target for hiring. Right now, we do have one school in Cambridge that has reached their 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 uh, their targets for hiring a diverse uh, teacher population. That's amigos. So we need to, it can be done, and so we need to encourage our other schools to reach their targets. The other one that I wanted to mention is um, is really related to Bobby's comment about not doing evaluations on time. I mean, people usually join, join a job because of our, an organization, and they leave a job because of a person. So we really need to make sure that we're on top of evaluations, not just of educators, but also principals, coaches, and any other professionals that interact with with teachers. Um, so that we do that on a timely basis and that that evaluation includes uh, racial equity areas in in their performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Why don't you wrap the the question, question number four?
Thank you so much. The nice thing about going last is I can respond to and build on whatever people have said. So to Eugene's challenge, I asked again this week for the exit interview data. We have not dropped the ball on that one. I'm, you know, we're we're pushing, we're pushing. So stay tuned. Um, Richard kicked us off talking about three sixty evaluations, and that's something I've been a big believer in. I pushed it for our superintendents. I pushed it for, you know, I think it'd be great for teachers, principals, admin, everyone to do that. And so part of that in my mind, in terms of supporting educators of color, but also students of color, is looking at climate data in classroom communities. And so, for example, do Latino students in a given classroom feel that the teacher expects great things of them? Do students with disabilities feel welcome in the classroom? Um, and maybe in a given year, the numbers are too small to be anonymous, but if you look at trends over a few years, what patterns emerge? As a parent of a child of color who's been in CPS since she was three, she's fifteen, so for a dozen years, I can tell you that there are teachers who would really benefit from a hard look at this data and the then subsequent work. So as for retaining educators of color, I think it's a similar evaluation survey that should be used with department heads, with principals, which departments have that exit path and which hold our black educators, which hold our immigrant educators. Um, and then what I think will improve experience and retention also of educators of color is to embrace the totality of who a human person is when they join a school community. And so that means not just supporting and coaching, but leaving behind like this is the way we do things here and and really evolving school teams to include educators of color, LGBTQIA educators, immigrant educators, educators with disabilities, and so forth. Finally, because I see I have ten seconds, we need to continue supporting um, the affinity spaces for educators of color, which is something I've done continuously for the four years I've been on the committee. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all the candidates. Um, you guys all did an amazing job, and we appreciate you. We appreciate you taking the time to join us today to share about your thoughts and answer those four questions. We don't, to also give a special shout out to all the folks who joined today, because we know that your time is precious, and you gave us um, the time you gave the students in the school the time today to hear, to hear out what um, what is uh, most important to our families of color. I also would love to give a shout out to our wonderful caregiver groups that co-led today's forum, Cambridge Families of Asian Descent, CFAD, Special Education Parent Advisory Council of Cambridge, CPAC, Cambridge Families of Color Coalition, CFCC, and the Chinese American Association of Cambridge, CAAC. And one other note I wanted to share with you that we did send out a fifth question to all of our candidates to respond. And unfortunately, due to time, we were unable to, uh, we decided not to include that into today's conversation. But we are hoping to share that with you on the CFAD website. The question is, given the high demand for immersion school programs, Mandarin and Spanish, for example, where does that fall in your priority in the larger educational context? And if you would address it, how would you address this demand for more foreign language proficiency? So as I shared again and before, we will post uh, their written response to this question on the CFAD website. And um, we put it into the chat here, and and we'll include it in the email to you after this forum. If you'd like to hear more from the candidates, please join My Brothers Keeper Cambridge in tomorrow's um, school committee candidate forum at five thirty. So it's five thirty to eight PM at the Cambridge Main Library Lecture Hall. So if you'd like to um, hear more, please join them at the Cambridge Main Library Lecture Hall. Again, thank you, thank you, everyone for joining us today, and we thank all the candidates, all the folks, all the co-lead sponsors um, for giving us your time. One important reminder before I uh, turn off the mic, please remember to register to vote, because your vote counts. Um, by five PM October twenty eighth, to vote in the Cambridge Municipal Election. You can um, send your vote to the Cambridge Election Commission Office. Mail-in registration must be postmarked on October twenty eighth, and early voting also begins October twenty eighth. And election day is Tuesday, uh, November seventh. So we hope that uh, you take all this information with you. Uh, your vote counts. And have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you.